Caleb Larson of LB Homes leads us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Legions.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we thank you for our community of Fergus Falls. We thank you for the citizens that call it home, and we thank you for these men and women who have risen to the call to serve as city council. And I pray, as we gather here this evening, that you would give them wisdom, that you would give them diligence and prudence as they look to the future, as they look to the present, as they look to the past, as they consider all that has been done and is being done and will be done in the future, to bless this community that we call home. Bless this meeting now, bless those gathered here, bless those who serve our city. We ask in your mighty name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's 5:30, October 7th, 2019, and I'll call this meeting to the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item on the agenda this evening is approval of the agenda, and I'll call on our city administrator Andrew Bremseth for any additions or corrections.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, members. We have two changes this evening. First of all, number 10 under the consent agenda has been asked to be removed by Councilmember Hicks. And then, under new business, we'll add a resolution accepting a donation of land and reestablishing the previously vacated alley in Block 19 of Cutler's Third Edition. There is a memo and a map corresponding to that item on your desks this evening as well.
All right. With that, I would look for a motion accepting the amended agenda.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. There are no public hearings this evening, and there are no bids to award under petitions and communications. First up, we have a proclamation for Indigenous Peoples' Day. And we have three individuals I'd like to call on to help us with this proclamation: Victoria McWayne Creek, Molly Stoddard, and Misty Sue. If you guys would come up, please. And just a little background, Second Monday in October has always been recognized by the city of Fergus Falls as Columbus Day. It's a federal holiday. As I was approached by the Human Rights Commission to ask if we would also recognize Second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. I reached out to some friends, including Molly Stoddard, the ALC, and the students at the Kennedy Secondary School, that's where I met Misty Sue, Ottertail County Historical Society. We put together a proclamation, and I'm going to ask Victoria McWayne Creek to give us a little background from the Human Rights Commission.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, as you all know, the Fergus Falls Human Rights Commission works for the protection of human rights for all people and helps empower people to realize those rights through education, advocacy, and community engagement. We are committed to creating the condition that allows Fergus Falls to be an inclusive community that values diversity and protects human rights for everyone. And today, we are coming before the council with a recommendation that the city of Fergus Falls proclaim the Second Monday of October to be Indigenous Peoples' Day in recognition of the people who originally inhabited the land that was to become Fergus Falls and in honor of a people who continue to exist and contribute to this city. Recognizing that this request would be ceremonial at best, we would still like to make this very important step. I have here a very brief quote from a dear friend of mine who identifies as a native, and these are her words, she just could not be here today. Columbus Day honors the mass genocide and colonization of a people indigenous to the land, and as a nation, we can do better. Honoring contributions to America should be an integral part of our storytelling and education, and renaming the second day of October Indigenous Peoples' Day will demonstrate that we are ready to tell and teach an honest account of events. That is all, sir.
Thank you. And Misty, did you have anything you'd like to add?
Um, I have two quotes, one that I found and one that a family member of mine suggested. The first one that I found was, "Many historical events shaped relationships between indigenous peoples and early settlers. Entreaties are an enduring reminder of how the past still influences this community." The second one, which a family member suggested, was, "Against all odds, we preserve and shall remain to pass on our inherent spirituality and culture to enrich the lives of our future generations."
Thank you, Misty. With that, I just have something from the Ottertail County Historical Society briefly, and then I'd ask the three of you to help me read the proclamation. "In the heart of the Ojibwe worldview, all life on earth is connected and interdependent. To coexist peacefully, we must base our actions with other living beings on respect, sharing, humility, and responsibility." So I'll start out the proclamation, and I'd invite my three friends to join me. A proclamation relating to Indigenous Peoples' Day declaring the Second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Fergus Falls and encouraging other institutions to recognize that day and reaffirming the city's commitment to promote well-being and growth of Fergus Falls American Indian Indigenous community.
Whereas the city of Fergus Falls recognizes that the indigenous peoples of the land that would later become known as the Americas have occupied these lands since time immobile.
Whereas the city recognizes the fact that Fergus Falls is built upon homelands and villages of the indigenous peoples of this region without whom the building of the city would not have been possible, and...
Whereas the city values the many contributions made to our community through indigenous peoples: knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, and arts, and the deep cultural contribution that has substantially shaped the character of the city of Fergus Falls, and...
Whereas the city of Fergus Falls is dedicated to opposing systemic racism towards indigenous people in the United States, which perpetuates high rates of poverty and income inequality, exacerbating disproportionate health, education, and social crises, and...
Whereas the city supports the closing of the equity gap for indigenous peoples through policies and practices that reflect the experiences of indigenous peoples, ensure greater access and opportunity, honor our nation's indigenous roots, history, and contributions, and...
Whereas the idea of Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native nations to the United Nations sponsoring an international conference in discrimination against indigenous populations in Americas.
Now therefore be proclaimed that I, Ben Shire, Mayor of the city of Fergus Falls, hereby recognize the Second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Victoria, Misty, and Molly, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two is an update on Trunk Highway 210 project, and I will call on MinDOT, well, I'll call on our city engineer, Brian Uvaro.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, and good evening, members. As mentioned before, you know, we've been talking with MinDOT for the past few years in regards to their upcoming project for 2020, the Trunk Highway, Trunk Highway 210 projects. As I mentioned, I represent for MinDOT, the project manager, Lori Vanderheider, is here to make a brief presentation, answer any questions as a general in regards to this project that will be adjacent to our community. So at this time...
Good evening, Lori.
Good evening. Thank you for having me.
Welcome.
Tonight. As Brian mentioned, I'm the project manager for the Trunk Highway 210 project. The project limits go from about 1.8 miles west of, or east of the Wilken-Coney line to about half a mile west of the interstate, so about where the road divides into four lane is the project limits. And as Brian mentioned, the project is scheduled to be built next summer. It consists of a concrete reconstruct. It's about an $8.1 million project. We'll have some shoulder widening on the western one mile of the project, basically for constructability, so we're only going to widen to, right now there's six-foot shoulders, we'll be going to eight foot. We're going to have some turn lanes and bypass lanes on the project. The next slide will show some locations, but a right turn lane is planned at the western entrance to the elevator. We have right and left turn lanes at 138th, which is basically the main entrance to the elevator, County Road 21 and County Road 86. Right turn lane at 160th Avenue and a right turn lane and a bypass lane at Airport Drive, Two Rivers Road, and County Road 116. And we had looked at doing left turn lanes instead of the bypass lanes, but due to geometric reasons, we could not get an actual left turn lane in. We will also be adding a truck inspection lane at the request of the patrol. That'll be east of 160th on the westbound lane. We are also looking at doing some snow fence and some ditching for snow storage. As I'm sure all of you are well aware, there is a lot of blowing and drifting issues on 210, and the road gets closed, you know, during the winter, during the bad events. We will also be paving three local roads that was at the request of the city. The old access to, or the access to the old airport at Airport Drive and Two Rivers Road will be paving up to the railroad tracks and 50 feet beyond. And we will have a project open house prior to construction next spring. So this one shows the locations. Let me find the... There it is. So this is where the ditching will be for the snow storage. One of them is from, it's like 130th Avenue to 138th. Adrian Miller's farm, if you're familiar with her, will have ditching and snow fence there. Just east of Airport Drive, we'll have a little piece of snow fence there. We'll have ditching the entire length of the red. We're working with the FAA to, and we'll have to coordinate also with the city. There's an airport easement, there's runway protection zone in this portion. And so at this time, the plan does not contain snow fence in that area. We would like to add it. We're doing a runway protection zone alternatives analysis right now, and then we have to coordinate with the city on revising the easement. So if we can jump through those hoops, we'd like to do that. It may not be part of the project. If we do get approval, we could add it as a change order to the project. And then the third location is by the church. I'm sorry, here. Right there, by the church, we'll have another widened ditch for snow storage and a snow fence, and this is what the fence will look like. It'll be four feet tall. Oops. And this project will be constructed under detour. The detour route will take County Road 19 to 10, which turns into 16, then 88 to 94. Local access will be maintained during construction, but because it's a concrete reconstruct, we have to detour the majority of the traffic. It will be up to the contractor to determine how he will maintain traffic. Some of the things that have been discussed would be flaggers, lane shifts, running people on the shoulders, or one-way traffic, running people on the shoulder one direction, and they'd have to take the detour for the other direction. And if that option were used, we'd likely have law enforcement stopping traffic in situations of emergency vehicles needing to get through. But that will be determined by the contractor. And I think the cost for the city road accesses is about $31,000. And then there's some utility relocates that I've been working with Brian on. If we want to include that in the project, that would be additional city cost. It's still city cost if you do it separate, but that's normally handled through a notice and order, but if the city wanted to include that in the project, it could be done. I've shared with Brian some deadlines and when that would have, that information would be needed. We have a website where you can get more information, and that's it, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Lori. Any questions from the council?
This is going to be ugly.
Yeah, especially on your neck of the woods, right? Thank you, Lori, for the update. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. There's a copy in your packet. There's also, let me just put a copy on the board for us. Anthony, you asked for item number 10 to be removed. Are there any other items that you would like to address individually? If not, I would entertain a resolution accepting the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. Brent, thank you. Caroline, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
That resolution is approved. Item number 10 is a motion appointing Annie Deckard and Steve Ruffer to the Airport Advisory Board. Anthony, do you have some thoughts on that?
Yeah, I had some thoughts on it. My kind of comment as much as anything is that this would put three Greater Fergus Falls board members, or, you know, two board members, both of which are in the executive and one's president, one's on the executive committee, and obviously then the CEO of Greater Fergus Falls on a five-person board. And I just think it's a little bit overstacked with three Greater Fergus Falls people on it, and that, you know, I would like to think that Annie Deckard doesn't really, you know, if Steve Ruffer's on it and Andrew Yegi are on it, that they should be able to feed all the relevant information to Annie Deckard and not have Annie Deckard attending another meeting, but out prospecting for people, you know, to come to Fergus Falls. So I would like to amend it to, you know, just Steve Ruffer be appointed. And I know there obviously has been, you know, Lonnie Boldwigg has filled out an application. He's the gentleman that owns the car wash place on the north of Union. You know, and maybe, if we wanted to leave it vacant tonight, I'd be quite happy to do that, but I just question whether we need three Greater Fergus Falls people on a five-person committee.
Sure. Thanks for that, Anthony. And I did talk to Lonnie about, there's an anticipated vacancy in January as well, and I talked to him about that. But I did interview both Steve and Annie about the, they showed interest, I interviewed them. I think that they, I believed in the vision that they had, and I would just say that I think the, it certainly wasn't intentional to have three members. Two of them are pilots, obviously, and they have knowledge of the airport and the workings of it. And I just think that the connection to the greater business community can't be overstated, the importance. I think that to have a strong connection with Greater Fergus Falls, which is the economic development arm of the city, is incredibly important. I think we would all agree, I believe that we would all agree that the airport is currently underutilized. It's often the first impression that people have when they come to our community. And so I think the, to me, the, it's critical to the success of economic development, and I also think that the marketing and the development promotional expertise that Greater Fergus Falls, in particular in this case Annie, brings to the board would be a welcome there. So, you know, those are the two people that I am recommending, and I guess it's up, I think it's up to the council, either vote those up or down. So I guess I'd just leave it at that.
I mean, I would make a motion to appoint Steve Ruffer and look for an alternate to Annie Deckard for the Airport Advisory Board, you know, just to, I think, you know, Andrew Yegi does a lot of the media and social work for Greater Fergus Falls, so I think he's pretty in tuned with being able to do promotion. I think obviously Steve Ruffer is both president of the Greater Fergus Falls and equally a pilot, so I think those two should be able to feed back, you know, and get support from Annie if they need it.
Yeah, I guess I'll just, I'll just reiterate, I think the connection there is one that we can't be strong enough, and I did reach out, when I reached out to Annie for her thoughts, she was incredibly excited about being a part of this board because she sees tremendous potential. She thinks that the connection, connecting with greater business community is something that she's excited to be a part of. She thinks that her emotional and marketing experience and expertise that she brings would be something that would be positive for the airport. So I'm going to leave my recommendation as both of them, and the way I understand the charter is I make the recommendations and the council can vote them up or down, and if you vote it down, I'll bring back different recommendations to the next meeting, but that's my recommendation, so. So in the, if someone would like to offer the motion to appoint them, we can vote it up or down, or if it's going to die for lack of a...
We have a motion on the floor already.
Yeah. But I don't, I think it goes against the charter though, because I make the recommendations to the council for the appointments, and Ralph can correct me if I'm wrong, but my recommendation is for Annie and Steve to be appointed.
I don't have an immediate answer to that question. Generally, the mayor points and the council confirms. And so I'm inclined to think that if the council is not wanting to confirm the members that are suggested by the mayor, there should be a motion offered, appointing both members, and that should be voted down.
Sure.
If the council wishes to deny the request or the recommended appointment.
So Anthony's motion is moot, right?
Well, I think it's, the motion would be to accept the recommendation from the mayor or not.
So then just vote it up or down.
I will offer the motion to accept.
Thank you.
What the mayor has.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Tom, further discussion, anyone else?
Yeah, my thoughts on it are, you know, I think they're both definitely qualified. Of course, Steve, having been involved with that airport for, I don't know, 50 years or whatever, or longer, is a good choice, and Annie's a great choice too. And I don't think the fact that anyone is on Greater Fergus Falls should necessarily disqualify them, you know, or, you know, and I don't have any concerns about having, you know, too high a concentration of, you know, of those board members on, in any group, you know, I think they'd be acting in their individual capacities versus, you know, Greater Fergus Falls agenda, anything like that. And I, you know, I would say if Annie feels like she has the time to participate, then she would be a good choice. Or, you know, maybe it would be better if she just participated in more of an advisory role versus being an actual board member, so.
She's definitely indicated desire, because I asked her that same question, but she indicated desire to actually be on the board, I thought we would take that one, I believe so. Scott?
What is the term for the members of this board? Is it a one-year assignment, or is it a multi-year?
I believe it's two years. One of them may be filling out a, finishing up a one year, and then one would be continuing on to a two-year. And I'm not sure which, we'd have to reappoint one of them in January as part of the point process. Is that correct, Lynn? Any other questions, comments?
I think, I think it's more that, you know, we need inclusion of more people, and, you know, when you have kind of three people from one board that now sit as three people on another board, and they are the majority, then the other two, you know, if they don't agree, they become mute. And I also think that we just need inclusion of all people from Fergus, not just, you know, three people that are all kind of, you know, out there. So, I mean, and I have nothing against Annie or Steve, I just think it's, you know, the concentration, that's my point. Let's find somebody else. There's 13,800 people in Fergus. You know, we don't need three people from one organization in the same organization.
Thanks, Anthony. Any other thoughts, questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Aye. Well, that sounds like more than eight votes. All right. Why is everybody looking at me? So it's five to three. Those in favor of the motion? One, two, three, four. Opposed to, those in favor of the motion, aye. One, two, three, four, five. Opposed, one, two, three.
Three.
Five to three, favor. Thank you. Moving on to ordinance and resolutions. Item number one is a first reading of ordinance 87, interim uses, and Ralph?
Ryan Miller.
Ryan Miller, we'll call on. Thanks, Ryan. Good evening.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, members of the council. Yes, this is the first reading of ordinance 87. This is introducing the allowance or the process for interim use permits within city code. This ordinance includes not only the inclusion of interim use permits, but some other updates that were found along the way to conditional use permits, which was kind of the origination of the discussion for the, you know, example of the wood burning stove in I-3 discussed earlier in the year. This would be an interim use permit process for allowing certain situations like that to exist. This would come along coinciding with the fee schedule review. There would be a $200 fee for the interim use permit similar to the conditional use permit as well.
Sounds good. Any questions for Ryan on that? If not, we just need someone to introduce that this evening.
I will introduce, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you. Item number two is a second reading of ordinance 86, seventh series rental registration. This has been before a public input session. It's had a first reading where the public had the right, the opportunity to comment. I think it's time to vote on this unless anyone has any last things they'd like to say. Scott?
Just want to again say that I've not supported this from the beginning. I'll be voting no. And I think that it's an overreach for the city to get into this to the degree that they are. There's a couple of details within the paperwork on this that specifically require the owner or manager to live within 30 miles of the city. Any violations of these things end up being misdemeanors, which I think is extreme, and things even as small as the fees that are called out are not being prorated, so if someone's going to have to pay a fee and it's November and it's due in December, they pay for a full year. Some of those kinds of things just don't fit, and I'll be voting no.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions, any other comments before we call for the vote? Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Fish. Yes.
Hey, bird. Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Ordinance, that ordinance, I'm sorry. That ordinance is approved. Sorry, Ralph. It's an important detail. All right. Item number three is a resolution approving the 2020 fee schedule amendments, and I will call on our city finance director, Bill Sonmore. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening. Thank you, Your Honor and council. Just a couple pages in here with a, pulled out just those that had some changes to them. So on the first one here, we have the administrative appeal fee. So if someone was going to appeal an administrative fine, there would be a $500 deposit for that charge that would go with that. So 500 for that, because with that comes a hearing. We have to hold a hearing and a lot of procedures along with that. So we did look at some other cities as well, and we're in the ballpark with that, so. Under the planning and zoning fees, the interim use fee that Ryan just mentioned of 200, you have some staff time with that, as well as mailing notices and recording fees that need to go into that, so we're trying to recoup our costs with that. Home occupation permit, $50. It's just a little staff time that goes with that one. You don't have the mailing notices and the recording fee for that. Turning over under rental registration, I'll say overarching on this, we're not looking at changing the rental registration fees for this season. So the fees that would be paid this fall for the 2020 permits, we're not changing. We'll review those again next summer as we go through the budget process, but there are just a couple changes in here, noting that the annual registration would be due December 1st instead of November 15th, so just 15 days later. We took out the references to best practices or the standard license. Now we just have the rental registration fees and then the standard rental registration that relates to those prior to November 18th of 2018. That's referenced in the ordinance. We did add a rental property conversion fee. So this is that first time you're going to change a residence into a rental unit, so it's going to become a business, so there was a $500 fee for that. A lot more time involved could be with starting up, you know, those first-time inspections, getting things rolling. We did compare to other cities. We've seen fees up to, you know, $1,000 on the... We've seen fees up to, you know, $1,000 on those. We didn't want to go that high, but $500 since these, you know, this is a business venture for someone. And then, as was mentioned, no rental registration fees are prorated, just pointing that note out on that. So that's the only changes to the fee schedule. Again, we'll come back next summer and look if we need to make any changes to the rental registration, the actual fees to that. But no changes in those this year.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions of Bill? If not, is there a resolution accepting those fee schedule amendments?
I'll off that.
Thank you, Krista.
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number four is a resolution approving a shared wall agreement with the Fergus Falls Hockey Association. I'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Rumsfeld.
Yeah, thank you, your honor, members. This was a individual attachment that got sent out to all of you after the packet. So if you're looking at that document, I'll just point out a few things. We heard from the Hockey Association a few meetings ago about their intentions to build this strength and performance center and connect it to the existing city arena on school property. There's an agreement that's been put forth that has the Hockey Association, the school, the city, and the Port Authority as parties to the agreement. The Port Authority will need to act on this separately at their next meeting as well. But I wanted to point out just a few things. Section 2.4 is where we're talking about connecting the new building to the existing building. And that simply is stating that the Port and city agree that the Hockey Association may construct and permanently attach to the arena. So that's really the, the big action that we're giving or taking through this agreement. And then the next page, section 3.5 about utilities, is pointing out the fact that the Hockey Association will be responsible to cover all of the utilities with the desire to have it be separated. And if it's not, they will pay the proportionate share of the utilities. All costs associated with the construction of this building and attaching this to the city, existing arena will be borne by the Hockey Association. We are not on the hook for any of that. And the other thing I'll mention too is that the agreement states that the city and the port have control over that interior door that connects the two. So when the arena's closed, that door will be locked and closed. When the arena's open, they have the ability to enter the arena. But that, access to that door is going to be similar or identical to the city's arena hours and not giving people access to go in and out of the arena when we're closed. So fairly straightforward, we're giving them the ability to connect the buildings and then spelling out the obligations of the hockey arena. And there's really no obligation of the city other than to consent to connecting the two.
Thank you, Andrew. Any questions on that agreement? If not, is there someone who'd like to offer that resolution?
I'll make that.
Thanks, Brent.
I'll second that, your honor.
You, Justin? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under presentation claims tonight, we have claims in the amount of $4,79,565.84. And if there's any questions, we will direct those to our finance director, Bill Sonmar. Hearing none, is there a resolution?
I'll off to the resolution.
Claims, thank you. Jim?
I'll second, your honor.
Thank you, Tom. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Sorry.
That resolution is approved. There are no board committee or department reports. There are no reports from staff adminis, or administrative officers. Under old, no, old and unfinished business, but under new business, as Andrew mentioned, we will need a resolution accepting a donation of land and reestablishing a previously vacated alley on Cutler's, Block 19 of Cutler's Third Edition. Good evening, Guy.
Good evening. Thank you, your honor. We became aware of a situation a couple of years ago. We've been maintaining this alley for many years, and we found out we didn't own it. So when we found out we didn't own it, we were advised to not use it and to cease maintaining of it. The residents along that alley didn't like that, so they are now desiring that we reestablish the alley that was vacated in 1903. So the portion is in red that was vacated. It butts up to this piece right here that has remained city property since the vacation in 1903. There are four property owners along this stretch, three individual residential property owners, and then LB Homes owns the remainder of the properties. So they have all consented to deeding over to the city land required to reestablish this alley. Our recommendation is that you pass a resolution to accept the donation of land from the adjacent property owners to reestablish the alley in Block 19, Cutler's Third Edition, and authorize a city attorney to draft a proposed deed for their signatures and for recording.
Thank you, guys. Does someone like to offer that?
I'll off of that, your honor.
Jim?
I'll second that.
Anthony, thank you. Any questions?
Just one question. Is it, is the tail end of that alley on the east connect to that parking lot that LB Homes has behind the Light &amp; Life Auditorium or not? I wasn't, I've not been in that corner.
It does.
It does connect?
Butt right up to it, yep.
Does it, is there access there?
There is access, and that's how we have been dumping their compactor. We'd come off of Alcott through the Light &amp; Life parking lot here and snake our way through this narrow drive of theirs. And they've got a compactor that sits back in here that our refuse truck empties three times a week.
And then you can get out by the way of the alley?
Yep. By the way of the alley? And that's what we would do now. We would access off of Whitford here on the west end and come in here. There's ample room for backing up to their compactor here.
Thank you.
So we'd not use the Light &amp; Life parking lot any longer.
Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Some miscellaneous announcements for the next 47 minutes, 42 minutes, 52 minutes. It's the fire department open, I'm trying to do math quick in my head, that wasn't working very well. But anyway, until 7 o'clock this evening, there's an open house at the fire department. That's this evening, October 7th. October 15th, a week from tomorrow, from 5:00 to 6:30 is the Friends of the Library are having a welcome celebration for our new public library director, Gail Headstrom. Yay! So let's all get out to the library on October 15th and welcome Gail to the community. Committee the whole, next committee the whole is Wednesday, October 16th, two weeks from tonight is the next city council meeting. Then we also will have the sales tax check-in meetings on October 28th at 4 o'clock. If there's nothing more to come before the council, we're adjourned.